Good evening. First, we have a public hearing tonight, so we will get into that first. November the fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, public hearing for variation order number nine-nine-nine dash two-one. Supporting hearing material for variation order number nine-nine-nine dash two-one for one fifty-five Centennial Drive West. Lot eleven, block one-twenty-nine, plan eight here, eight-three-four, P O P O North Division for the administration.
This is the public hearing portion of the request for variance. It's the time that the public can come forward and speak if they're for and against any sort of development. And then council would debate this in the regular meeting of council. I'll go through some of the background material and then I have the mayor open it up to the floor. As the mayor said, variance nine-nine-nine dash two-one for one fifty-five Centennial Drive West. Block eleven or lot eleven, block one-two-nine, plan eight-three-four, Portage of Prairie Land Title's office. The owner has requested to consider the construction accessory building. Dimensions of fourteen by sixteen by eleven and the positions and the plans that are attached to the package. The property zone is semi-to-dutch use zone R two. Zoning requires a number of setbacks. Specifically, the one that we're looking at this evening is the rear yard setback of three meters or ten feet. The proposed project does not meet the three meters. And the request is for it to be reduced down to point six-one meters or two feet. All the other setbacks are within compliance. The rear yard setbacks that are developed by the city zoning are often to protect utilities such as phone lines and stick coast and gas that's buried. But in this case, the way the land is laid out, those are found in a different location. This has been circulated in accordance of the Planning Act. And all the affected property owners have received their notices. Stico, Manitoba Hydro, MTS Shaw, and Fire and Emergency Services were notified. And the city has not received any objections to date. And this is now the public hearing portion where people can bring themselves forward and make presentations for or against.
Thank you. With that information, we're now going to receive presentation to support or object to the said plan. If there's anybody in the audience that wishes, please stand, state your name.
Hi, my name's Jeffrey Field, the owner of a property of one fifty-five Centennial Drive West. I came today to hear any questions you guys have, possibly resonate concerns that you guys may have in building this. At the end of the day, this is a prototype I'm working on to try to develop on a much larger scale. I have one customer that's interested in this already, that's why I began building. And once, once it's finished and I have a working prototype, I'm hoping to go in larger directions on this, not out of my own sight, off-site, preferably somewhere close to rail. That's where this is going, this is where it's headed. I'm working on helping the states. Are they keep recovery system for the greenhouse because ultimately the goal will be to have three hundred and sixty-five days a year? Plus twenty growing temperatures offset by solar, solar heat. Residuals are solar heat, and the light is going to come from solar panels as well, but. So I came today to voice our answer, hopefully any questions or concerns that any council may have.
Thank you. Okay. Even though we likely know the answer, are you for or against this project?
I am most definitely for this.
Thank you. Do we have any other presentation supporting or objecting? Third and final time, do we have any other comments supporting or objecting to this? Saying no? We will move this forward to the agenda on council. Hold for agenda. Council Valentin, Council Fottenall in favor. We're going to call the regular meeting of council to order for November the fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one at seven oh five PM. I would just like to remind people that in order to be present in the chambers, you do register with Tammy two oh four, six-seven-seven-seven-nine-three. And it's very important that if you're not able to show that you do let us know because as in a case of today, when you had more people registered than were able to count, it's important that if you can't come that you do cancel so we can get a hold of somebody else. Otherwise, there's always the do not to watch the council. Tonight on Zoom for council, we have Council McMyrtle and the rest of us are here in council tonight. First, I would like to recognize that we're on the traditional land of the leadership pre-nation homeland of the making and we are all pretty people. Thank you. Next, I'll go for approval of the agenda.
Mayor Smoak, can I say something before we do? I just wanted to extend my regrets to our delegates tonight that I wasn't able to receive their presentation in person. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you. Open Susan, you were that Council McMyrtle says this will get to these not in person. Thank you, Ray. Next, for approval of the agenda. Council Valentino, if you can, Mayor, can I mark all in favor?
All right.
Next, we're going to go to our presentation delegations. We have the Thompson landlord, Adahoff. Yeah, we have ten minutes. You have ten minutes there to take your cases. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Smoak, council members and staff. I'm Susan Harrison. As of January twenty twenty-two, I have lived in Thompson for sixty years. And have operated its regeneration property management business for forty-three years. The company we need is Volker Beckman, who has lived here for sixty-two years. And is an entrepreneur, business owner, and landlord. We are representing the Thompson ad hoc landlords group. A group of common questions and concerns who have been meeting informally over the last eight months to talk about how we can work constructively with the city of Thompson water utility to work on the solution for our common problems and that is fair to all concern. Our group consists of Nick DeMarcus, landlord, Rob Jewitt of Thompson Twenty-Eight Company Limited, Gerfrey Sehnu and Lockear Sehnu of Westwood Apartments, Lauren Melva Spicer landlords, Sally Roberts landlord, Dan and Catherine McCollum of the Ethan Properties, Bernard Kelly of Remax Thompson, Ruby Day of G B C, Dave and Sylvia Green landlords, Carolyn Turpia of Calily Apartments, Chuy Tron landlord, Volker Beckman landlord, and me, Susan Harrison of L I R S Limited Property Management Broker. We have written you a letter that I'll read now. It was dated October fourteenth. Dear Mayor Smoak and councilors, we are a group of landlords and property owners in Thompson that have invested in our community. We represent over forty million dollars in property assessments and over seven hundred thousand dollars in municipal property taxes and are interested in our community's benefits and success. We understand that the city of Thompson has the most water sewer breaks of any community in the province, has one point three million dollars in overdue water bills, receives the most complaints in Manitoba to the Public Utilities Board, and has over two hundred lawn repairs outstanding from sewer and water breaks. We are concerned about these issues and would like to help alleviate them. As Thompson's infrastructure ages, we feel it is imperative to find solutions that will be more efficient, result in less disputes, and be less controversial in future. The intent of our group is one, to assist in reviewing all policies and programs that affect water and sewer matters regarding breaks, billings, meters, processes, maintenance, and efficiencies. Two, we seek and suggest improvements in protocols and procedures for implementation and enforcement of water and sewer issues. Three, to reduce disputes and disagreements between the city and landlords and property owners. Or to recommend guidelines and solutions that are fair, transparent, and more efficient for the benefit of all property owners, landlords, and the city of Thompson. Our ad hoc group has decades and decades of experience in rental management and related infrastructure issues. We have been meeting for the past six months and have identified two dozen issues and questions we feel must be addressed. We would like to discuss these matters with you to find solutions that will be mutually beneficial, protect tenants and taxpayers, and ease the burden to the city of Thompson. Our aim is to establish a collaborative recommendation that would create a win-win scenario for the entire community. Therefore, we invite you to send two or three representatives to begin with our group in November twenty twenty-one to review and discuss these issues and our concerns. Please let us know who your representatives will be, and we can arrange a time and place to meet in a neutral location and begin. Yours truly, Thompson Adahoff Landlords Group, B C Thompson Chambers Farmers. And I'd like to emphasize that through this effort, we are looking forward to having a win-win situation that will save time and money and build friendlier communities. We will appreciate your reply to us as to who your representative will be by no later than November thirtieth this year so that we can begin. Thank you very much. Well, if you have anything to add.
I think the intent to reinforce the fact is that we're looking to meet with a few councilorism first to determine the parameters of these discussions going on, and we're looking for a positive solution that will benefit everybody. That's right.
Thank you, and I do believe when we received the letter and we showed the first time that it actually has been referred to committee, so. We hear, Anthony, give us any comment?
No, we'll just look for direction from council once council decides.
Thank you to the Adahoff Landlords Board Association. I appreciate you coming and reading the letter again for the public to hear. And if I may add, it's nice to see the gallery somewhat full. It's been a while. It feels good. Water and sewer issues have plagued us since the beginning of this term and probably well before that. And we've brought this issue up a number of times, not only in budget meetings, but also in camera and in regular meetings as well. Knowing that we had a special meeting this morning or this afternoon, I had held off, but we'll be calling for a special meeting with respect to these water issues. And I believe I've got the support of a number of councilors to go ahead and have that special meeting. It's long due that we, not only on the benefit of landlords, but also individual residents, worked some of those issues out. And a number of those issues were listed by the presenter. I certainly would like to relay that that's no secret to anyone on council. We all know these problems exist and that they need to be addressed. And I hope with the start of a special meeting that we can start doing that, not only for landlords, but for individual homeowners as well. We've all seen inaccurate billing, you know, sometimes billings that are all over the place first individual owners. These things need to be addressed as soon as possible. Thank you, Madam Mayor. You'll be seeing a special meeting, best for me and other councilors shortly.
Thank you. Council Valentino?
Thanks, Mayor Smoak. Thanks, Susan, and to your group for the letter. So councils where we got them delivered into our locker cover whole thing. So if you haven't got a hard copy, that's where they they are distributed. Have a chance to read them in full. Yeah, to our water issues. Definitely, it's an issue that we constantly seem to be discussing. To the good news is that we did get the forty-eight million to repair water and sewer starting this spring. So those plans are starting also, so that would also be a discussion point. That would probably take away some of the solutions to some things, actually replacing brand new is going to be a will make a big difference to a lot of it. And yeah, it is my understanding that it has been sent to committee and can come by special meeting or just in camera and find with the discussion as council for it to be on our agenda. So thanks.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't want to reiterate what everyone said. It's like a bread and fresh air. So I have someone inside of council coming forward, and so I thank you that you have done that. Not sure he's going to work with you, but I hope and and we do send people to work with you. I think that's a great idea to involve the community. Certainly, there's committee work. There's only so much work you can do in committee, and I think working with the public is a great further, better way to do things. I know myself and other councilors there have been dealing as other councils have spoken about it, dealing on an individual basis. I've had people actually break down and cry, and I'm not going to afford a four thousand dollar bill for a break with no explanation really. So I believe the discussions, if they're done in the right way, it not only benefits the business owners, but it's also going to benefit the individual homeowners. And I will tell you, when someone comes to present to you with over forty million of rights, it was an improperity, we'd better be listening. Seven hundred thousand dollars in taxes, a lot of money. So thank you for coming, and I certainly look forward to hearing where we go with this, and I hope that it doesn't take long to get it done. So thank you again.
I don't have anything to add to all this comment, but the only thing I want to make sure the public know that I myself don't have a copy holder, copy holders for the obvious token.
Thank you. Very good to see you. Okay, thank you. I appreciate you coming to this, and again, as we said, we have got, you know, forty plus million to work on water and sewer because a lot of our infrastructure is that sixty-year-old infrastructure that we need to be working on. So looking forward to the next steps and thank you very much for coming to us. Thank you. We look forward to hearing from you shortly. We will. Good night.
You could stay one hour and five hours tonight.
Thank you. Next, we're going to go to number five, community comments and feedback. Any community comments or feedback for tonight? Second time, any comments?
I have one, Madam Mayor. I actually have two, actually.
Name and address, please.
Chris McKinnon, eighteen Gray Oak Bay. First one would be what part date in the last council meeting? Doesn't really sit well with me on how it was how the city employee acted. So do we expect that they continue like that?
We're actually working internally on a number of issues. Thank you.
Okay. Next one is is the city looking for somebody for public works?
That is in the H R department. We pass it that. We pass the information down there. And I, that is as far as I can go with that.
We'll deal with the H R department.
Yeah.
He had it. I tried to do that this afternoon or after this morning, but she was busy today, I guess. Okay, that's it. Thanks for having me.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Ron Monticuck, twenty-ice street. Wonder if you could tell us when the call will be going out for for citizen reps for the committees.
That usually happens in December. We are looking at some restructuring. Anthony, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, currently council's reviewing their organizational bylaw, so any calls will be delayed until decisions are made by council on the next steps for the organization by law.
Any other comments, concerns? Final time, any other comments or concern? Thank you, seeing none. Thank you for your comment. Next, we're going to go to adoption of minutes. First off, it is a six-point-one variation order number nine-nine-eight dash two-one, November third. Resolution two-zero-two-one-one-five-eight, moved by Council Fountain, seconded by Deputy Mayor Landmark. It resolved that the minutes of the public hearing for variation order number nine-nine-six dash two-one, held in Council Chamber, City Hall, Thompson, Manitoba, on Monday, November the first, twenty twenty-one, be adopted as circulated. Administration?
Nothing further.
Anybody other? Such a problem?
It doesn't pertain so much so to the minutes, Madam Mayor, but the outcome. The outcome is somewhat open, I understand on this, and wondering how council will proceed to close that. If I remember correctly, this variation order was for Wolf Street. Is that correct?
This is, you're right now, you're debating the minutes themselves.
Understand that.
My understanding from, I wasn't at the meeting last time, but I was told that the variation passed with the condition. So then it's up to the owner to meet the condition. That's how council normally passes conditional variations.
If I don't follow up here, it gets lost. It's gone. That's why I'm bringing it up here. Something for, I guess, us to pick a vote maybe, but I understand that that wasn't closed off profit. That's all. Thank you.
So the follow-up, that's interesting. Absolutely, the city manager is right. It was passed with a condition. Is it now the responsibility of that owner to report back to the city if they cannot meet the condition? Is that where we go?
The city would, the owner would report to the city on what progress they've made on their condition. If they can meet the progress and their variation will be granted per council's outline.
And if they can't, then the the resolution really dies.
That's correct.
Yeah, okay.
But just to point out right now, we should be debating the minutes themselves. Counselors can always bring forward, I believe, we'd have to check the planning act. You may be up before reconsideration. But we'd have to check the planning act for the language on them.
Thank you. That's helpful. Thank you.
Okay. Did you have a comment, Professor?
Yes. I went to the development person, so I didn't get the clearance by Stico. So I took everything all down, re-planning every, and I was okay. But I never got the clearance, so I don't know why the resolution is coming forward tonight to pass it when when there's nothing there.
These are just the minutes.
Hold for the question on the resolution. Hold on in favor.
I have seen.
Reason for extension?
It's
six-point-two, the doctrine of minutes for the regular meeting of council. Resolution two-zero-two-one-one-five-nine, moved by Deputy Mayor Landmark, seconded by Council approved. It resolved that the minutes of the regular meeting of council, held in Council Chamber, City Hall, Thompson, Manitoba, on Monday, November the first, twenty twenty-one, be adopted as circulated. Administration?
Nothing further.
Over the question, all those in favor?
All right.
Adoption of minutes for the organizational meeting of council, November the third, twenty twenty-one. Resolution two-zero-two-one-one-six-zero, moved by Council approved, seconded by Deputy Mayor Landmark. It resolved that the minutes of the organizational meeting of council, of the Council Chamber, City Hall, Thompson, Manitoba, on Wednesday, November third, two thousand and twenty-one, be adopted as circulated. Administration?
Nothing further.
Over to the quick, favor?
All right.
Very good announcement. We're now going into resolutions. Seven-point-one is a resolution to approve variation order number nine-nine-nine dash two-one, one fifty-five Centennial Drive West, lot eleven, block one-twenty-nine, plan eight-three-four, P O P O North Division. Resolution two-zero-two-one-one-six-one, moved by Council elsewhere, seconded by Council Fountain. Whereas the city of Thompson is in receipt of a variation order application number nine-nine-nine dash two-one dash one fifty-five Centennial Drive West, lot eleven, block one-twenty-nine, plan eight-three-four, P O P O North Division for the following. The construction of a fourteen by sixteen by eleven accessory building built within the required rear yard decreased from ten feet to two feet in a semi-decat residential zone R two. And whereas, under provisions of the Planning Act, a public hearing has been held to hear the representations and or against the variation order. Now therefore, be it resolved that Council approved variation order number nine-nine-nine dash two-one dash one fifty-five Centennial Drive West for the construction of an accessory building in a semi-decat residential zone R two. Administration?
Just to note that we just previously had the variation order hearing on this matter. As I noted then, we have not received any presentations against. And as of this night, we've received one presentation for from proponent. As I also mentioned, the setback was not met and requested for the change down to two feet. Normally, this is difficult in the rear yard, but because of the layout of this property and the way it works with the public reserve behind it, utilities are far enough away that none of the utilities had any issues. And the resolution is to approve the variation order as presented.
Thank you. Council?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Certainly, I don't have no issue with it myself personally. It's good to see people doing things in the backyard, it's front where it's where they can in our city. The only question is, did I do that? This is something that's going to be taken apart after and sold and built or is that, is that what it is?
My understanding from the proponent's presentation is that the building and from the documents received, the building that's built now is the prototype in their backyard, but it's going to remain there. If they decide to build more, it has to be offsite. If you were to start building repeatedly in your backyard, you'd have to come for a home-based business. And that could be permitted or conditional, so that's a different operation.
It's not attached.
My understanding, this is a standalone building.
Right, right. So it can be taken apart if that was the wish of the owner. If I said to him, I want to buy that, I can do that, right? Okay, that's good. That's all I need to know. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. When I look at the map, the survey map, I believe it's called. There's a dot on the property. Is it where the location is?
Sorry, the map isn't attached to my agenda. I'll have to go to the
There's a dot there, right?
Just one more.
Just to make it easier, is that probably that the backyard is facing the birdwood drive, but it grew? So when they say the, when they say the the U three, well, the guest line is adjacent to, which is mean on the green zone there, like the way the green line is?
The utilities are found in that public reserve that's back there, which is over, it's between, it would be the multi-use path and the homes fences in the back there. Normally, utilities run closer or along the fence lines in the back. But in this case, because of the way it was laid out, utilities are found further away.
Okay, I just want to make sure that I'm looking at the same thing. So anyway, Madam Mayor, one of the concern I have is like, to avoid a lot of question in the future, if they can attach the line location as well. question in the future, if they can attach the line location as well, so we can see clearly, that way we know exactly what we are getting into it rather than guessing and I don't know if it's a practice or not, but it just like what I learned from last time is kind of surprised me. It never happened in my two terms.
I've never seen line locates, sorry if I can address this, I've never seen line locate provided as a drawing. They will go to the place and do locate on a request. But normally what happens is done as a circular, it's up to that utility to make a response and tell you if they agree with it or not.
She's not, what you call, friendly requests, they're kind of like a.
Owners sometimes, owners, sorry for interrupting, sometimes owners contact themselves and get the joint or map of whatever they want. That's not the practice of when the city does circulars. The city will contact all the people, the people will then do their own search, and they'll let you know if they have an objection to it or not. So in this case, I believe there were no objections, and I believe the owner actually went above and beyond and requested locates on talk about.
Okay, alright, just just a comment, there's no. Anyway, I think this is a good project for owners to step up and do something else, and I will support that, thank you.
Thank you, Pastor Valentino.
Thank you, Mayor Smokey, I had a question about whether or not, if there's going to be repeated buildings, but my questions were answered by the opponent saying that would be offsite, so I'll be supporting this as is, thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Council McMordon had his hand up.
Yeah, thanks, Madam Mayor. I agree with Council Ellsworth, I think it's it's good to see people building and investing in their property. And with no objection from utilities or emergency services or anything like that. And my reluctance to to tell people what to do on their property that they pay taxes on, I'll be in support of it tonight, thanks.
Thank you, any other comment? Deputy Mayor Landmark?
Yeah, I just want to say I'll be supporting this too, and I'm looking forward to seeing it. For where's it to make it be a wonderful thing, and just a heads up, there's group up in Churchill is doing something inside a container. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comment? Okay, that's, we'll call for the question, all those in favor?
Alright.
Very good announcement, thank you. Is a resolution to approve the extension of land lease for lot one, plan number five zero nine four, P O P O, North Division, Manitoba Air Service Branch. Resolution two zero two one, one six two, moved by Council down the panel, seconded by Council Ellsworth. Whereas on October nineteenth, twenty twenty, Council passed resolution number twenty one sixty seven, approving to extend the term of lease agreement for one year between City of Thompson and Manitoba Air Services Branch, for lot two, plan number five zero nine four, P O P O, North Division, consisting of two hundred and fifty thousand eleven square feet. And whereas Manitoba Air Services Branch has requested to extend the term of the subject lease for a further one year commencing October first, twenty twenty one, and expiring September thirty of twenty twenty two. And whereas, the cost of the lease fee is five thousand thirty six dollars pursuant to the City of Thompson's annual fee and fines schedule. Now therefore, be it resolved that council extend the term of the subject leasing for a further one year commencing October first, twenty twenty one, and expiring September thirtieth, twenty twenty two, for lot two, plan five zero nine four, P O P O, North Division, Manitoba Air Services Branch. Administration?
Yeah, this is really for the full plane base that's down by the river. In the past, this was done as a multi-year renewal, and then not because of changes to government services, it has become a yearly renewal, but they have to go to Treasury Board for their renewals. So it's a bit of a housekeeping memo that comes forward, and the resolution requesting a rollover lease for the long-term tenants of the full plane base.
Thank you, council, any question? Pastor Paul?
Whoa, Madam Mayor, I got a big one here. So as many at this, and this room knows, I worked as an environment officer for Manitoba Conservation for over a decade. Responsible for fuel spills, things like that, because that was the purview of Manitoba Conservation within the scope and the mandate of that. You're. If you go to this flow plan base today, you'll see nothing but snow, but if you went yesterday, you would see not one, not two, not three, not four, not five, six fuel spills, large ones, all over the place of that full plane. This is the same department that's responsible for fuel response within the province of Manitoba, and not to throw my old employer under the bus, but it does feel good to actually throw them under the bus to be honest with you. They should be held to the same exact standard that every other person in this province is held to. And if we're the lease owners, the landowners for that property, there's no way we should ever allow them to continue their lease without cleaning that stuff up conditionally. So I would move, Madam Mayor, make motion that we only approve the extension of the land lease with the condition that that, those spills get cleaned up. They're on the water, they have an impact, and have a potential impact that the city may, I'm not entirely sure this is for a lawyer, but the city may be held responsible for. And it's been a long time that those things have been there and unactions, so that would be my recommendation, I'd like to move that, Madam Mayor, that that happen.
Okay, I think maybe there is some, a bit of, this is not the actually where the fines part. Right, this is the government services building that are on the lab.
Recommend table that's resolutions, but we can do more work on this.
Okay.
Because I can't identify exactly. This is a new, something.
Before you go for a table motion, I'd like to add another question too. Do we, since we know what we know now, so can we ask for the larger deposit then, secured deposit? Are we allowed to have that as a seating?
As I said, I'm going to have to do more research on the history of this. You do have a maximum lease rate that's on your fee and fines, but there are certain size leases that you can do as a negotiated lease. Side of the fee and fine should, so there's a possibility.
Thank you. So, if I get a motion to table it? Pastor Valentino, sponsor approved, all those in favor?
Alright.
Okay, do we need to have a date to bring this back?
I'm gonna pause it on there, so you know.
Yes, we can do it. Do we have a recommended date that this been? By November twenty nine?
I would bring it back to the meeting in December. For the end of the year, but that gives me time to follow up the province on.
From December thirteen?
Tommy, do you know what the date is? December thirteenth.
Okay, so we here, let's redo the vote again, sorry, or just, we're going to table Council Valentino move and concert proof seconded that we tabled this until December the thirteenth, all those in favor?
Alright.
Here.
If I could, Anthony, when you say you're going to follow up the province, is that, then we can expect that there would be possibly a visit to that site as well, like to have a look at it?
I'm not sure, I have to see what the historic leases are here, if there was any previous agreements. Maybe they're aware of it, they have, I don't know, I don't have enough information to, and then I will follow up with them as well.
Just a quick question. What's the date of the lease, January first, December thirty first, or are we into it now?
We're into it now, but it's like I said, it's more of a housekeeping formality that they hold over here.
But what are the dates for it?
It would normally belong October first until September thirty. That's all of our other leases roll over.
Seven point three is a resolution to extend the interim board of the Thompson Community Development Corporation. Resolution two zero two one, one six three, moved by Council Valentino, seconded by Council approved. Whereas on April thirtieth, twenty twenty, council approved resolution number two zero two zero zero five eight, appointing an interim board of directors to Thompson Community Development Corporation for a period not exceeding one year from the date of the agreement, which included Mayor Colleen Spook, Anthony McGinnis, City Manager, Deputy Mayor Ellsworth, Council Coburn, Council Landmark. And whereas on November thirtieth, twenty twenty, council approved resolution two zero two zero two one six, appointing Council Andre Prove to the Thompson Community Development Corporation. And whereas it has been recommended that the interim board of directors is extended to May thirty first, twenty twenty two. It resolved that the council extends current Community Development Corporation Board of Directors until May twenty first, twenty twenty two, and will include the following, Mayor Colleen Spook, Anthony McGinnis, City Manager, Council Ellsworth, Council Landmarks, and Council Prove.
Nothing further, this is just from our understanding requirement for the extension of the board members from council on the Community Development Corporation, if this is required in the company's act in Manitoba. So it's all one, it's the extension to allow time to recruit some more board members and then do a transition to a public lease, a board of public members, and reduce the number of counselors on the board.
Thank you. Any questions, Pastor Valentino?
Thank you, Mayor Smokey. I'm going to be supporting this resolution. When this first was brought forth in April thirty, twenty twenty, I always spoke about how the city can't be running the CDC, but I understand how long it takes to get things up and running and to get people involved. So I'll definitely be supporting these names, they're working hard and attending many meetings, and I just want to say a typo that I believe it should say Deputy Mayor Landmark when he's referenced in the resolution. Thank you.
And Colleen has two weeks. Pastor Walter?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, absolutely, the board has ran very well since we started, I do have good news. At our next meeting, we will be bringing on four people from the public, which will give us a total of nine. And the reason for the extension, we'll then have the opportunity, the hopefully at our AGM in May of twenty twenty two. And the idea is exactly as the city manager described. It's to rotate out council members, and we'll be starting, I think we'll probably do two more in May of twenty twenty two, and so as we go, there'll be only one representative from the public that will be, or from the city that will be on that board, the rest will be from the public, it will be completely separate from the city, which is a good news thing. So thank you.
Thank you. What's the problem?
I'd like to follow up on that.
Any other comment?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to understand this. That means our projection will be made to be first to see who will come out of this. So, okay, so now that we've got my question then, do we have any vision of a projection when we throwing out of this equation so that the private can look after this committee?
So rather than leaving a committee that we've worked hard on for a year, and we all back out, it would be really tough on any or community people to be involved, so we now recently, again, will bring four on at the next meeting, we've already did the interviews, it's accepted. And then in May, we'll take two more councils, we're still trying to answer the question, and we'll replace them to the two more committee or community members. And then I think it's a year after that, or the work committee will replace the other two. So the city eventually will only have one representative, which is probably going to be someone from administration. Hopefully that answers your question.
Thanks, my last question will be, so once we get that all transferred, eventually, will it be still under the city of funding?
It is absolutely right from the start, the goal of the CBC not to be funded by the City of Thompson. Right now, we're operating on grant money. We need that funding to get started, but we've identified, we're getting into depth and depth on it, we've identified a number of projects that the CBC can take on, that eventually will start giving us revenue, which will make itself sustaining, that is the law.
I'll just note that it will remain though a controlled entity of the city. And council could decide if it wants to fund it every year.
Okay, see, nothing, all have been requested as a reported vote, all those in favor? Council McMurdo, Council approved, Council Valentino, Mayor Spook, Deputy Mayor Landmark, Council Ellsworth, Council Coburn, opposed. Council Fountain, Council Wong, Carrie. Eight point one is a second reading of the bylaw. Second reading of bylaw two zero one five two zero two one, the venture bylaw for the pump truck. Bylaw two zero two one, one six four, moved by Deputy Mayor Landmark, seconded by Council Ellsworth. It resolved that bylaw two zero one five dash two zero two one, being a bylaw to provide for the expenditure and borrowing of funds in the amount of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the purchase of a fire pumper for use within the City of Thompson, to be given second reading, administration?
As part of council's budget deliberation, they identified the purchase of a new pumper truck, and the way to do it using a combination of reserves and the debenture. This is the second reading of the bylaw to allow the debenture to move forward. It would be followed a future meeting with a third reading. Really housekeeping to allow a board to take place.
Thank you. Comments, Council, Council Walter?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, I do have a couple of questions, we didn't have a meeting, or I know we had first reading, but we didn't have a meeting since we've come certainly tonight, so I've never had an opportunity to ask those questions, so tonight I will take that opportunity. First, my question is, did we tender out to all banks and Thompson was my first question? And if not, why not? Because according to the information I have, we have no agreement, and that's not had any agreement to my knowledge with any bank in many years, so I know that you can shop around. A hundred and eighty thousand dollars, I believe, if I'm right, is a lot of money to pay for the interest on on this loan. And if we can get it cheaper, we should always be trying to do that, so I'm not expecting to get answers tonight, but certainly I want to raise those questions.
Thank you, Pastor Wong.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. How much reserve do we still have at the city at this moment, Madam Mayor?
I am not privy to that, we can find that out for you.
I believe it's about fourteen, right?
The ventures also go to different departments, there's, the numbers are attached to different departments.
So I don't think we need to borrow money for that, four hundred and fifty thousand, if I'm not reading wrong this document here. And for the ten years of payment, probably causes almost two hundred thousand dollars. I believe we have fourteen million sitting in the bank, in the bank. I think we had kind of a agreement, not kind of like consensus at that last meeting, I think we all looked into that, paid it off. So I still think we can able to do that. And I don't understand why we have fourteen million dollars sitting in the bank, and potentially we could have some surplus this year as well, I'm looking at about one point five to two million dollar surplus. We can easily pay that off. Otherwise, why do we have so much of reserve sitting in a bank and not go pay this off? One hundred and fifty thousand, so I'd like to ask the mayor to make a friendly amendment, instead of going to the debenture bylaw, can we just go for the payoff option?
Okay.
That would be a separate resolution counselor to do a different type of purchase. So it would be a resolution for a purchase directly rather than a bylaw.
So just, can I, okay, so basically, if let's say this bylaw is defeated, that means we still buying the the fire truck, but with a different type of payment, in my. The fire truck, but with a different type of payment in my mind. If let's say this is the, the direction we want to go.
The city's already entered into an agreement for this purchase through the budget process, so that's the direction it was given last year. And now the payment's coming forward, so council had told us the structure in a way, so the purchase was made upfront, but the payment would come later. When the truck's about to be delivered, so the truck is built about to be delivered. And now you have to pay for it, and the way that we were directed to do it was fifty percent reserve, fifty percent debenture. If council wants to change your mind on that, council will debate that, and then direct administration to pay it full. Straight from now, reserves.
So there was my question, let's say this bylaw. Is defeated, we want to change the payment, method of payment, we still able to, that's what my question. As long as we don't kill the, the fire truck.
As long as we have the funds available, we'd have to discuss with the finance officer, if we'd be required to have a public hearing to spend differently, or if it comes straight from the reserve. As the purpose was stated, I wouldn't be a hundred percent sure of that, it might require a public hearing, it might not, but we could always follow up on that. Also, do you wanna note though that the interest referred to on here? At about a hundred and ninety thousand is if it was actually charged at seven percent. Just to remind council that the way the municipal works is we charge. The highest amount of interest that we can imagine ever happening, but we actually borrow at a real number. And that's done through shopping around as the counselor has alluded to. But it wouldn't actually be charged at seven, the reason that that requirement is there is that if something goes wrong, you don't have to then stop the whole process, it started over again. But it's borrowed at actual market rates.
So, Madam Mayor, can I make a motion to? To pay off with the different method rather than the debenture?
I don't think you can make a motion on the bylaw that way, you'd have to bring that forward as a separate bit of council business. If you wanna vote against the bylaw, that's fine, but you have to take the bylaw for what it is, because it's a first, second, third reading. But if you wanna bring forward the council, you'd submit to Tammy to bring forward a resolution on, you know, I'm trying to say. And then I could do the homework with the finance officer to see how we would do that. Questions were answered with the interest rate.
Thank you, Mayor Smoak, yeah. So, this is, I just wanted to reiterate, this is the second reading of the bylaw, there's still a third reading to come also. And if we were going to change the direction of funding, you're gonna use any reserve money, is my understanding, we would have to have a public hearing. Which would delay the process, so we didn't have a consensus last meeting to change the structure of payment. What we have is fifty percent of this being funded out of reserve and then fifty percent is a debenture. Because we always know there's an end date of a replacement for the. Fire truck, so this is just the one the ventures paid for from the other fire truck, and this is just the start of the new adventure. For the new fire truck, and in twenty five years or whatever the, the end date is, that's how it would roll out again also.
Yes, we can. So what is your point?
About the process, earlier Counsel Valentino said we change the method of payment, you have to go to the public here, is that under the rule or law? Can you clarify for that, please?
According to your point of privilege doesn't apply to the question you're asking.
Anyways, I'm supporting this as, as planned as counsel, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I wanna make it very clear, we are in support of the pumper truck, that is not the, what we're debating here tonight. That is not the question. And I will tell you now that we don't always get the information on first readings, we know that, first reading, we pass it, then we may. We may hey, send back our administration for more, we got it, cause there is a process, we have to pass three readings for it to be done. So it's not uncommon for information to come forward in a second reading, just to shore it up or whatever we're gonna do. And if we had a meeting, a scheduled meeting. Some of these questions would have had an opportunity to be asked in these meetings and would not be in the chamber. Thus therefore, because we didn't have a meeting. You are now seeing questions come out, regardless if we agree or disagree. On the resolution, that will be defined in a few minutes there when you call for the vote. But let's not lose track of the fact that as a council. That we have the right to ask questions when we cannot find it in a, in a, in a committee meeting, which we didn't have that opportunity, so this is. Regardless of our council's vote, that's their problem, I'm okay with that. But let's clearly understand. That when we raise those objections is not. To say that we're against a pumper truck, but we need answers to the questions, for example, did we shop around, and yes, I did know of seven percent. And yes, I know there's cheaper rates out there, we do it all the time on individuals, we shop around and we should be doing the same with the city. So if we can't. Ask questions, then I don't know why we would even debate resolutions or bylaws and, and, and if I vote against the resolution, that's nothing with the pumper truck. I want a pumper truck, so let's be clear there, I want a pumper truck. So sometimes we will make. A different decision based on the fact that Counsel Wong has already stated. We've had since our last budget. Right at that time, we had additional monies that was left over from the operating. We expect there'll be money left over again in this budget. I think if we got an extra, I'll be nice about it, an extra hundred thousand dollars. That we have, that we don't need to borrow, why wouldn't we be doing that, putting it in the public safe, because we sure can use it there. So based on that. I would recommend that we get back to meeting, so we don't have to waste a lot of the public's time in debated chamber, thank you.
Thank you, sir, I think the question was that, was changing around bylaws in the middle of meeting, I'm understanding, Anthony, you can get the questions that were asked. To us before the next meeting.
Can, we can get that any information, question?
So seven percent of the five. What is the lowest interest rate cities ever got on a debenture? Roundabout, four percent, five percent?
That we've ever got, I wouldn't know that.
So you say it's four percent, which is low, most commercial loans these days are five percent. Right, so we're still talking a hundred and thirty, a hundred and forty thousand over the next ten years in taxpayers' money. Right, as a rather, where we can take that money and save that iron forty thousand, paying the thing off. And no taxpayers' dollars gotta go into the future. It's a win-win situation for everybody, I think.
I don't have like the law, I seen the loan with the breakdown, but. For the clause, what brings up. What's going around the room is, if there is extra money, can we apply it to the loan? To pay it down faster, so we're not using reserves that we, you know. Once we know what, if we have a surplus and we wanna use those reserves, then we can at that time. Is that an option in the loan? To how council pays for this is their decision. There is no loan taken yet, so however you wanna structure your money, you would then tell us how. The thing is, the reason this is coming before you, is you've already told us how you want it done, so that's how we've done it. But if you wanna reconsider it or change it, that's your prerogative as council, you just have to provide that direction to us.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I. That's not a small sum of money, no matter what the interest rate is, it's gonna be. A fairly large amount, and you'll remember, it's roughly the same amount that we put into the jumpstart part. Put it in perspective, not that that part costs that much, but that's what we put into it. I won't be supporting this tonight, not that I don't wanna pump the truck either. Really, I know there will be extra hoops to jump, but if we're able to save that amount of money, I can't. I operate my personal funds the way I vote here. And vice versa, and would expect nothing else from myself but to. Vote in what I feel is the best interest of the city, which is usually this best way, the way I choose to run my household. Well, I would certainly support anybody who came up with the. A resolution in the next couple of weeks to. To pay for this entire amount from. Any other means other than the debenture. So if it has to come to reserve, I, I support that, but I will support. Going to reserve when we have money, sorry, going to debenture when we have money in reserve, thank you.
Yeah, just, just to kind of reiterate Counsel Fallon's last sentence there, I, I would like to see this. The, the, the change is just proposed by Counsel Wong initially, brought forth in a resolution prior to the reading of the third bylaw. Preferably in camera, I guess, then we can get some clarification of whether or not another public hearing. Will be required if the proposed changes are to be made, and then we can move forward at that final meeting with the third. The, the final third reading is, thank you.
It's not a resolution to bylaw. You can still, you can table it or you could vote on it, it's your, it's a council's choice, it's there to be voted on, if someone wants to put a motion for it to table it, then.
I think Mayor Smoak, we should table it until we've got the answers to the questions. That I've asked and other counselors, at least look into it, see what it entails, do we have to have a public hearing, what is it we want? And. I don't think it's gonna delay us that much, we've already committed to the proper.
Do I hear a motion?
That's a motion.
Counsel Valentino, all in favor? Can we put December thirteenth as the same date that we did that out with? Thank you.
If I could, I would ask that it be a sooner meeting. Because if you are required to go through with a third reading or whatever happens. You do still have to buy that truck by December, as I understand it, I think it's ready. So you might have an obligation under contract, I'll have to check into that. So it's better to have the responses back by the next meeting.
November twenty nine? Everybody agreed that November twenty ninth is a table? All those in favor?
Is that not the?
We will go into America for, first off, we have a proclamation. By the virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of Thompson, I hereby proclaim November twenty first to twenty eighth, twenty twenty one. As matters told what substance is an addiction to air machines in the city of Thompson. We will now go into activities from November second to the fifteenth. On November the second, I met with Elder and Sister Wong from the Marvin Church. I brought readings at the moment we have a Franklin Center Annual General Meeting. And we had the organizational meeting of City Council on November third. I attended and brought. At the Remembrance Day Service on November the eleventh. Today I attended Max with Counsel Ellsworth, the annual general meeting. And I believe he went on the tour of the Phoenix Service after, I was unable to pull that. I'd also like to mention Winter Wonderland, the aquatic facility, the pool committee. People have actually, before the snow started yesterday, been decorating in that, and please get ahold of Jan. The number is on the Facebook page, you can hold her. And I would just like to do a shout out, shout out for North Stars, they had two wins this weekend. The hockey, our young local hockey team is doing very well this week. Let's get out there and support them, their next games here, I believe, are November the fourth and fifth, the Saturday and Sunday. Or December, pardon me, fourth and fifth, the Saturday, Sunday. And this weekend, they're in Canora, so let's wish them all the best. I will now, for the council, if they have any.
Yeah, I just wanna add to, to the tour really did today, and, and it's worked your lot to do a tour of these facilities. It's under MAFS, so it's one for, it's called the Phoenix Project, and it's one for men which have been there for a while, and stand for this is for women. And I tell you, it's a beautiful facility. The bedrooms is unbelievable, I know, can't beat a woman, but I'm serious, no, there's twelve, there's gonna be twelve rooms and, and it's so needed in Thompson. And let me tell you, Mayor Smoak, you were there, we attended their board, it runs great. A lot of organizations, called a corporate board actually, so someone from each organization. Is, is there to represent them and they work well together and. A lot of times, we don't realize these committees are out there and the work they're doing, but it takes all, all of Thompson to be involved in all this work, different committees. And you never really realize how much good work is going on behind the scenes, so I was really impressed today. And I was thankful for an opportunity to vote and represent the city, so thank you.
That's very good, and I think this is just one more component of our community well-being and safety strategy that we can see is implementing. With the helping of the folks that are telling this down in their life, anybody else?
Hey, good night, everybody.